Students this year, and it does take time. It does, it does take time. You are in your lesson and you are giving them small lessons on the side while they are doing their own personal work. It does, it does take time because they do really need that background knowledge of the expository pillar and the narrative diamond. You start one day at a time and every second you have, all the kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing, teaching them, and they do catch up. They do, they do catch up because it is, the, the way that it's laid out is almost common sense. And so, once they start getting into routine, it, it clicks for them.
And I, and from the K1, I had, like I said, I looked up my kids. So, I had some kids who were not at our building last year. So, they didn't have Empowering Writers. But they've caught on pretty quick. At first, they struggled. They were like, what am I doing? I don't know what I'm doing here. But working, like I said, in small groups, one-on-one with them, they catch up and they, they're becoming amazing writers.
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really impressed. And I know, I look at the end of all of this and that is basically, what are you going to do from high school and on to your next step? And I know a lot of the students take the ACT and writing is now a part of the ACT. But if, if that's really the first time that they're presented with a demand for that kind of academic requirement, it's too late. And to start it at this level is fantastic because it seems to build as you go through the years. And I, I agree with you. Some of the things that your children write are the things that you keep and treasure forever. So, from a parent aspect, I really appreciate that and I'm sure all of your parents do as well. So, I like the focus on writing and I, I like that you're able to embed the grammar so that it doesn't seem like work to students, that it's more like what it should be, which is a creative endeavor and, and not so much the, the work part of it. It's what, it's seeming fast. Because I think once you, they realize that it's creative, they want to do it. It's, you know, like the other creative things that you do, music and art and drawing and those things, becomes something that you really get involved with and want to do. And I, I also wanted to say, I, I think that the program in delaying the actual writing part of the piece helped to develop that, that deeper thinking that we're trying to get at because it forced the students to, if you couldn't get down and write, then you had to start doing it in your mind. You had to start thinking about it. And, and that's one of the things I think we're trying to teach as well. So, I think it's, it's a great program. And I especially like that you all have earned these, that have such a positive attitude and such a willingness to engage in a test of something you worked so long on. I think that's an aspect of our staff, you know, to say, I don't know what they're doing, but they want us to do it and we'll give it a try. And we ran with it and it really helped to, to maybe change your thinking of some things and help you learn about it. That, that's incredible. Thank you very much for having the climate to, to be open to that. And thank you at, at Buffalo Jones to kind of be so interested in, in taking that on when you already had a full credit. So, that's a great team that you created and I think it's really been a hard district. Thanks a lot. It's a great presentation.
So, basically what they're asking you for is one extra year of the pilot and just kind of keeping it in the back of your mind. A couple of years down the road, we will be adopting English, Latin, the dogs again. So, it's only a couple of years away. So, this will be a good test as to whether you want to stay with something like this or go to something that's embedded again.
Is there curriculum written for Empowering Writers from like high school level?
Through an eighth grade. It's a sixth and an eighth grade book. And I think that's what I've referenced is that they're having a hard time knowing what should be sixth grade, what should be seventh grade, what should be eighth grade. We do have some seventh and eighth grade teachers that are interested because Becca's going to do a presentation Friday and she's opened up to seven and eighth grade teachers.
Do we teach note-taking and writing?
Yeah.
Yes, they have one of those.
And there's also a research note format inside the Empowering Writers.
I'm teaching it to my first graders right now.
Oh, that's awesome.
They're learning.
All right, you made my whole night right there.
So, we're not asking for Action Night, but we'll have us back to work possibly on the Sunday agenda next time. So, if you have questions or concerns, please let Mrs. Roger right know and we'll be in Action Night next, uh, next month.
Since I want to roll, did you have enough PLC time to work this through and collaborate with your colleagues?
Uh, the PowerPoint reservation? Oh, no, we did it by email for prep hours.
Yeah, okay. But you have enough collaboration time to say, hey, this isn't working for me. Do you have any ideas?
For our PLCs, we have two weeks that just is Empowering Writers.
We do, we do it in our building also. We have, we spend a lot of Empowering Writers meetings and PLCs and great. The nice thing about Empowering Writers, they have videos to help you teach certain lessons. So, if we are having trouble with teaching, like say suspense, there's a video on the authors and showing how to teach suspense. So, we can go in and, our coaches are the ones that have those videos. We can go in and watch those.
Can you guys collaborate in the classroom?
K1 this year, we have been doing some lesson planning because the K1 curriculum's a little bit different. So, we offered, since we've done it for a year, we offered some time where teachers could come and we would help lesson plan. They had questions, we'd help them and we'd do that after school one day a month. And we got release time for that and it was if they wanted to come or not. We have quite a few teachers from certain buildings that would come and collaborate with us.
We also have grade level meetings once a month and this has been a huge topic for them this year. They've worked a lot on Empowering Writers, using their new books. We've really found them to be good before, so it's been neat to watch them, you know, letting their students.
That's great. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Um, as we, there's so much in the news lately about education funding. So, we kind of thought it would be a good idea to kind of take a big picture approach and kind of look back at kind of how we got to where we are and where we think we might be going over the next few years and kind of just make sure you are on with all the information that you need to have because people are talking about this information. As you will remember, at the end of 1415, so at the end of last school year, that was the last year that we had the old formula in place. So, beginning with the 1516 school year, the year that we are currently in, legislation brought in two years of block grants. In doing that, I kind of wanted to review what block grant funding did and didn't do for us. I probably did these out of order. I want to start at the bottom. Right before we went to block grant funding, we had a mid-year cut in 1415 when we were still under the old formula. We lost LOB state aid of 483,000 and we had a reduction to capital outlay state aid of 204,000. And basically after that reduction, they froze our state aid for both of those items at that amount. And that was the amount that's going to flow forward for the next two years. So, they reduced it, froze it, and then it goes forward from there. And so, then when we roll into the block grant funding, general state aid for 1516, this is excluding special education and virtual waiting. So, it'll differ a little bit from another slide that you see. But for just the basic state aid portion, they budgeted us to have an increase of about $150,000 for the current year that we're in. And then for next year, we have an increase scheduled of $360,000. But what they also did was they added the extraordinary needs fund, which every district had to basically kick in 0.4%. For us, that amounted to about $170,000. And that all went into the extraordinary needs fund. So, if you look at just 1516, you can kind of go, got 150, lost 171, eh, not great. So, I like to look at numbers, so let's look at numbers. Here's where we were at under the old formula for 1415. But then, as we just talked about, they froze us mid-year. So, here's where we ended 1415 with a reduction of $686,000. So, we slide forward into block grants under year 1516. You can see that the capital outlay state aid right here and the LOB state aid stayed the same going forward each year. But the general state aid increases a little bit. It's a little bit different because of, like I said, sped and virtual waiting are in there, so it's off slightly. But you add the 171,000 for the extraordinary needs. And one thing that I think is real interesting, if you listen to a lot of what's being said, they'll talk about the state is funding more money into schools. But it's kind of how you look at it. If you look at all these dollars, there's some things that we can't spend in there. We can't spend in CAPERS. Whatever money we get for CAPERS that goes in, goes out, it doesn't even stay with us for 48 hours. So, that's not spendable dollars, discretionary funds that we can use in the classroom. And if you look, that's really the only line that has a lot of movement. So, I'm going to take that out and I'm going to look at state funding that we can actually use. For 1516, we actually lost a little bit of money, but for all intents and purposes, we're relatively flat. If we look at 1617 under just the block grants, we are going to gain about $360,000 next year. But if you look at over the timeline of the three years, we've actually lost $333,000 that we can put into the classroom over all that time. Just some data to compare it to, what's our enrollment done? In the past, under the old formula, if we had an increase in students, we got more money to help educate those kids. In 1415, we had an increase of 125 students. The year that we're in right now, we had an increase of 99 students. We didn't get any additional dollars for those students that we increased this year. We are anticipating that our headcount will increase in similar fashion for next year. Again, no additional funding for those students. Let's look at the inflation rate. It was 0.88% in 1415, 0.52, and I've just kind of done about a 10-month look at 1516, we're 0.52%. So, for the two years, we're at 1.4%. And if you look at our net change for the three years, we actually have reduced our overall spendable dollars. If you take the 1.4% inflation rate and you apply it to what we had back here, we should be getting over $54 million. It was 54,200. So, we're over a million dollars short of just keeping up with inflation with what we had right here. But then I would also argue, back here, our base state aid per pupil was 385,200, which I think if you inflation, but that is the inflation index. From before, it was 4,5000, if I remember. I don't remember the exact number it was supposed to be.
4492.
4492? Okay. So, that million dollars we're short isn't even where we're supposed to be. Questions on that one slide? I'm, I'm full of them.
Give her words for words.
We got, oh, just wait. Just wait. Let's see. So, if we look at that, you can see we've got a relatively flat funding, but this is just the revenue side. If you think about what's happened to our expenses over, every year, they're not going down. We haven't been able to give huge raises, but we have given raises. It does cost us more to heat and cool the buildings and buy supplies. So, if we look at what the district has done in the past few years, I just went back three years and kind of said, what have, what have we done to try to cut costs? And what's that impact had on us? 1314, we implemented the program budgeting reductions, which totaled $811,000 with a loss or a reduction of 17 and a half positions. Most of those were in classified positions when I went back and looked. 1415, we implemented a portion of our program budgeting reductions. We didn't have to do all of them. We did about half of them that year and that, we had a reduction in staff of 13.5 positions. And then in this very past year, the one year that we're in right now, we did two things. We had administrative reorganization where we had a reduction of 5.5 positions. That saved us about 450,000. And then we implemented the remaining program budgeting reductions from the prior year that we had, had to implement to meet, to balance the budget. We went ahead and did those, worth another savings of 570 and an additional eight positions. And I believe it's about 44 to over 44 positions in the last two years that we produced into these cuts. And every year, as we've done program budgeting, we're trying to keep things out of the classroom, but obviously 44 positions, some of those are affecting the classroom. And as we continue to do this, how much more can we do without getting into the classroom? Block grants are scheduled for two years. Next year will be the second year. But earlier this month, Governor Barack Obama signed legislation that kind of lays over the top of the block grants. It changes them slightly. So, it modifies it a little bit. So, we have Senate substitute for House bill 2655, fancy name for this thing. It's good for one year. It'll be for the final year of block grants. It changes the LOB aid formula. Basically, the LOB aid and the capital outlay state aid that we get, there were two different calculations that they did. And they were based on what our relative assessed valuation is to other districts in the state. So, if you're a poorer district, you got more state aid. If you were above a certain line, you either didn't receive state aid or you've got a lesser amount of state aid. The LOB aid formula was kind of on a, they stratified the assessed valuations and the lower, I believe it was 81.2% of districts got aid for LOB. For capital outlay, it was based on the median of that schedule. So, it was a lower threshold and a lower amount. So, what they've done is they said, they took the capital outlay application and applied it to LOB. And when they do that, we lose $596,000 in funding in our LOB. But wait, they're going to hold us harmless for you. That's always good. So, there's a way to, to cover that. The problem's going to be is that we have an opportunity to backfill that $596,000 that we are going to lose in LOB funding. But then they kind of put a gotcha in there that says, but if you choose not to do it, we're not going to give you all that whole harmless that we said we were going to give you. And I'll kind of walk you through that calculation here in a minute. And then the extraordinary needs process has been moved to KSDE. So, last year when we went and begged for money for reductions in assessed valuation or increased student population, we had to go and beg in front of a committee made up of legislators to ask for that money. They decided they don't want that job anymore, so they are turning it over to KSDE, which is actually a very good thing. KSDE will have some very good guidelines around who will, who won't qualify. They will have a lot of reasonable ones attached to them, so. Okay, this is the, these are the dollars related to this new bill. Quite a few moving pieces. And so, what this does is it compares to what's going to change from last year's budget to this year's budget. So, if we look at the revenue pieces, we're going to get an increase in block grant funding of the 365,000, which was on that very first slide. That was already scheduled. There's a decrease in LOB state aid of 596,000 and it's going to come out of the LOB. You'll see it in the second column there. Increase in capital outlay state aid, and that's way over in the right-hand column. The reason we're getting more capital outlay state, capital outlay state aid dollars is because back in 1314, when they froze the state aid for LOB and capital outlay, we were number 226 on the list of, I think it was 286, 284?
286.
286 districts? 286 districts. So, as where, are where we fall with our assessed valuation and how it compares to other districts, we're pretty far down the line at 226. That was back in 1314. What they've decided to do is they're going to recalculate the capital outlay state aid based on what it would be, based on how you fall in 1516. By 1516, we have fallen to 248. So, we are a poorer district and will get a little bit more state aid for capital outlay. The difference in this capital outlay state aid though, is that I can only use it for capital outlay items. The capital outlay state aid that we received in our budget this year had a little bit more flexibility. We didn't have to move it to capital outlay. We could use it for other funded, funded items if we wanted to. This is going to be directed to go straight into the capital outlay and have unlimited uses. So, I can't necessarily put it in the classroom. The hold harmless state funding. This is where they said, okay, the LOB state aid is going to go down by the 596,000, but wait, you're going to get 293 more in capital outlay. The difference between those two numbers is 300,000. So, we're going to hold you harmless for one year. So, in overall total funding, I'll go ahead and give you that 300, but it's going to go in the general fund. What that means is that it's separated a little bit, but I'll, I should wait to the next line, the other one. Decrease in virtual funding. This one has to do with how we budgeted for 1516. For the last few years, we have seen a general progression in increased enrollment at the virtual school. We kind of projected that forward and anticipated growth again this year. We actually did not see growth. We saw a decline. So, when we look at funding for next year, I'm not going to increase that. I'm going to hold it relatively flat for budgeting purposes. So, we'll have a smaller amount in virtual aid that we're going to be expecting for next year. And then this line would be maintaining the LOB at 28.8%. If you think of these two funds as buckets, the LOB currently, we're at 28.8% of this bucket over here of the general fund. We can go up to 30% in that bucket. With the reduction of the state aid, taking $596,000 out of that bucket, it gives us a little bit more room that we can move up if we needed to. But because of the hold harmless feature, they basically said, if you don't backfill what we're taking away from you, we're going to proratably take away your hold harmless. So, we don't have to choose to backfill that LOB with local taxpayer dollars. But if we don't, we're going to lose all or a portion of the hold harmless money. So, if we look at the increase in available funds, it's about $782,000 if we were to choose to backfill the LOB. How does that compare with what we're going to have for expenses? The top is all the same as what we just saw. What I've added down here is additional expense line items for next year. If we wanted to maintain the salary schedule, that would be about $600,000. And that equates to about a 1% increase across the board. So, relatively small increase, but $600,000 is what it's going to cost us. If we compare that to, compare last year's budget to this year's, we added during the, during this particular school year, we added two sped paras and a transportation mechanic, so we need to add them to our budget for next year. So, we'll have another $83,000. You can tell that if we take all of these expenses out of the LOB and the general funds, we're going to be short because we only have 489,000 more and I've got 683 of additional expenses. So, what I'm doing here is I'm moving over $194,000 of expenses that I'm going to take out of the capital outlay fund because with the expanded ability to use some of those capital outlay dollars, we can choose to pay for some maintenance salaries out of capital outlay if we choose. We haven't done that in the past because it takes away from other items we can use that capital outlay for. But in this particular case, we can slide over and take $194,000 of that new money that we're getting and pay for some of our maintenance salaries so that we can still maintain the salary schedule and do the other things that we need to do. That would leave us with about $100,000 of additional funding if we moved all those pieces in that form. Yeah, we'll do, it's going to be better and better. Any questions on that? Okay, so when we're talking about maintaining the LOB at 28.8%, obviously that means we have to generate more local tax dollars. So, in wanting to just kind of show a comparison here when we're talking about the mill levy, this is from Lou Superm Dick's audit presentation on our audit from last year. So, this is going to be fiscal year 15 mill levies. This is us here in the brown. Our mill levy is in here at the 47 point something mark. We are the second lowest in this particular group of similar districts. You can tell, the red line here is actually the FTE. So, you can kind of compare what district's FTE, what their district FTE is as compared to their mill levy. So, if we were to increase our mill levy to backfill that LOB, we're obviously going to move over on the right on the schedule. But I would also argue that many of those districts are going to be in that exact same situation as we are, that lost or are losing capital outlay or LOB state aid and will have the choice to increase their mill levies to gather all those, gather those hold harmless dollars. But we also have the option not to backfill that. So, if we don't backfill that with local taxpayer dollars, what would that look like? Again, same exact schedule you saw before. The only difference is I've taken out the maintaining the LOB, so we're not going to backfill the $596,000, but we're also going to lose the, lose the whole harmless funding. So, our decrease in available funds actually changes so that it is a $117,000 loss between the two there. But then we would add to that all of these additional expenses of $683,000. So, basically, we're looking at $800,000 in cost reductions that we would need to find if we wanted to maintain the salary schedule and not do any additional cuts or do anything other than these items right here. There's more things we wanted to add and we need to find additional cuts.
But that's worst-case scenario. You don't, it, it's not a guaranteed loss of those funds. They just say you may not get those funds or it is guaranteed loss.
If we don't backfill the LOB, then yes, we will lose those.
Absolutely.
All of it. We will lose 50, I don't remember, 46 cents on the dollar. For every dollar we don't backfill, we'll lose 46 cents of state in the hold harmless. So, we've confirmed that we are a poorer district, 244 on the list, and we're being required to tax our local taxpayers even more for this semester. The slide we looked at before talked about all the cost reductions that we've done and, you know, I mentioned that we tried to keep them out of the classroom. We've done program budgeting for 10, 15.
15.
Okay, quite a while. And there's only so much you can do with 2% cuts here, 2% cuts here, 2%. Another 2% is applied and it's not going to get us where we need to go when we're talking about potentially $800,000 of those cuts. So, just trying to be prepared for whatever you would direct us to do in the future with our budget. Earlier this year, we got together with the principals and just did some brainstorming on potential cost reductions. And really, anything was on the table. You had an idea, we threw it out there, they could save some money, we wrote it down. At this point, we haven't put a lot of, we only, we put any dollars to them yet. We haven't even put them in an order. We just said, we need some ideas. So, in case somebody comes up, comes to us at any point in time, keep in mind, this is right after we got the mid-year cut. We're kind of already knowing we're not really on stable footing. We want to make sure that we're prepared. So, we put some stuff together. We have a, I don't, 20, I don't look at the list, 20 items maybe?
47.
47. Geez, we were all way up. And I've got just a couple ideas here that I want to share with you. And please keep in mind, and I want to make it very clear, these are not things that we're saying we're going to do. They're not in any particular order. They were just ideas that were thrown on the table. And I share them with you only to explain that the ability for us to keep these cost cuts out of the classroom has kind of started to erode away. I would, like, anything we do now is going to hit the classroom. It would be, most of them have already in some form or fashion, but this is really going to be directed at us. We could increase class sizes and reduce our number of teachers. We could reduce or restructure, restructure instructional coaches. We can eliminate all-day kindergarten. Right now, the state doesn't pay us for all-day kindergarten. Go back to half-day. We could reduce or eliminate sports or activities. We could reduce just certain sports. We could reduce all sports. Maybe middle school sports only. Maybe eliminating a music program. Possibly at the lower levels, you can't participate in music, some of those music programs till later, having your school career. Restructure or eliminate librarians. Close an elementary school. Every one of those things is going to hurt. And none of these things are anything that we would want to do, but we needed to be prepared. prepared. And as if that wasn't bad enough news, it's going to keep getting worse. Very late in the legislative session, there was a bill introduced, House Bill 2741, that would start, was proposed to start in 1718. And the summary on this bill is it would cut 373 million out of district budgets, to be across the state, 373 million. It would basically give you enrollment based on a graduated scale, which I found graduated scale kind of interesting. If you have less than 400 students, you would have, you would get 8,490 for each student. So if you have 399 students, you're going to get 8,490 for each of those students. But as soon as you have 400, you only get 7,269. So when you get that one extra student, you lose 480,000 in funding. And the same thing happens when you go from 99 to 1,000, but you actually lose 1.1 million in funding because of the way that scale works. So it's already started out to be a little comical as I read the summary of it. It prohibits spending general state aid for food service. This doesn't affect us too much right now. Our food service department has been able to be relatively self-sustaining. There are a lot of districts in the state who have to supplement. We have started to supplement just slightly, so having this in there would hit us a little bit, but not a lot. Extracurricular activities. You cannot spend general state aid dollars on extracurricular activities. So if you want to keep those extracurricular activities, the money's going to have to come through your local taxpayers. Mandatory participation in a state health plan for all school district employees. The plan doesn't even exist, but they, they would design one and I love that they can tell us exactly how much money's going to stay, this one doesn't even exist yet. But it's our understanding that this health plan would be a high deductible health plan, which would be extremely, extremely bad for many of our employees. The benefit that would be provided to our employees would be greatly reduced because we do have a very good health plan. So if we were to lose that, we would probably lose quite a few employees with it. Problem with this is the state says that's going to save about $2 million just for our district, but we're not going to see any of that savings. The state's going to keep those savings. So I don't have any additional money to pay my staff anymore for losing this great benefit. It forces districts to spend down cash balances. This one actually does not affect us. Based on the calculation that they are currently using, there have been many calculations of this tossed around. The one that they are currently utilizing in discussion, though, would mean that we would not have any cash balances. But for districts that maybe don't get any state aid, or that are saving to do a building, maybe they don't get any bond and interest state aid, so they're just saving their dollars or saving because they know they're going to have cuts in the future, they'd have to spend their dollars on regular operating. And I believe they have to spend it over three years, five years, I can't remember what, they've broken down. But there were some discussions earlier with different calculations of excess cash, and we were, and some of those calculations deemed to have excess cash, which I would argue that we don't. Bond and interest state aid would be approved through a committee. So right now, we have the option to pass a bond and then we automatically get the state aid that's due to us based on where we fall in that schedule. This would basically have to go through a committee and they have to, these schedules if it's 100% classroom use, then they'll give you 100% funding. If it's for education support building, you don't get any funding for it. If it's for an athletic building, you don't get any funding. Or if it's an auditorium or gymnasium, maybe 50%. So they would have a scale of what you could and couldn't get state aid for. Allows public school funding to be used at private schools. This one's interesting. If you choose to have your children attend a private school, then basically 70% of the dollars of the 8,490 or the 5,763, whatever your school would have been entitled to get for your student, your child, 70% of that can go into an account that you can use to pay for private education.
Private education will be home-schooled and also?
I believe, completely, it has to be certain requirements, you have to bring a, teach them certain subjects, some basic chores, and as long as those qualifications are met, then you can use.
Who's going to honor that?
And this is how it would affect our district. They would, they, according to the state, would say that we would receive 2 million in savings, and I quotation that because we wouldn't receive that money in savings. We talked about the statewide health plan, which was 1.3 million, sorry, I think I said two earlier. Food service, again, we spend just a tiny bit right now on food service, so we would have to basically give that back. But is that really savings when we're going to have to figure out how to fund that anyway? And then extracurricular activities, again, it's not savings if we want to keep those, we're going to have to get local taxpayer dollars for those. But they have this wonderful hold harmless thing in here again, because basically, they want our reduction in aid to be 7.8 million. 2 million of it we're going to find through these savings. 5.8 million is going to be hold harmless. So for two years, they will give us that 5.8 million dollars. At the end of two years, it goes away. So we will be here trying to figure out how we're going to save 6 million dollars. So compared to the 700,000 that I showed you earlier, it just, this is my last slide, if it makes you feel any better. It's going to get any worse than this. This hasn't, doesn't even, hasn't made it to, I don't think they had any hearings on it. We don't know if they, they will discuss it when they reconvene, but this was introduced right before they left, so. Josh Collins, do you have any comments? Did I miss anything?
You did see some great information today, tonight, from the high school, from many of our career and tech education teachers. And one of the things you might not have seen about House Bill 2741 is there's no provision for CTE funding or vocational funding. And that's an example of areas where this bill really falls greatly short of what we would hope to see in a, in a formula. We tried to present to you two things tonight. One is kind of a look at next year, the law that's in front of the Supreme Court we hope to get a decision on. But it's important to understand that when the court made their ruling in February, they told the legislature, there's an easy way to fix this. Put back the capital outlay state aid that you took away in the block grants. Put back the LOB state aid that you took away in the block grants. And that will fix this. You won't have a problem with the court on the equity part of this lawsuit. It would have cost the state about $34 million to do that. But instead of, and I know it would be difficult in these times to find $34 million in the, in the budget for the state of Kansas. But instead of doing that, they play the shell game. They move funding around, and we now don't know whether or not that's going to satisfy the requirements for equity for schools. And that won't even be heard by the Supreme Court until the 10th of May. And then it's going to probably, you know, it's going to take them some time to render a decision. And this is the elephant in the room that's hanging out there over whether or not schools are going to be open. So we're preparing as though that is going to be upheld, because that's the best information we have right now. But that also should give us some insight into the thinking of our legislative leaders in Topeka. But if that doesn't inform our thinking enough, House Bill 2741, as KJ said, was introduced by the chairman of the House Education Committee and the chairman of the Senate Education Committee. And I, you know, it doesn't take a CPA here to understand the impact that essentially $7.8 million in reductions would have on the school district in Garden City. And I can tell you that when we got the printout last week, it doesn't look any better in Dodge and it doesn't look any better in liberal. And there's many other school districts that would be facing similar challenges. As KJ said, statewide, it cuts 370 million dollars. I'm not an attorney, I don't think that there's any way that that bill is going to pass constitutional muster with the state. But the fact that it was even introduced that way is another picture into the thinking of our legislative leaders. And Gloria, you've hit it on the head. What Senate substitute for House Bill 2655 does is it reduces state funding and forces us to raise local taxpayer dollars to fill that gap in our LOB state aid.